Call meeting order at 7:00 PM with the pleasure of leaving.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Cody, would you do roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Milky?
I am here.
Treasurer Rice?
Here.
Trustee Bills?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Hope?
Here.
Trustee Thering?
Here.
And Clerk Cody here?
Thank you. Happy to entertain any motions regarding the agenda. I will note that our clerk may have to leave this early tonight. Did you have any special requests regarding agenda order? I'm giving you the opportunity to make the motion if you want. I mean, anybody can. Just because I know you need to leave.
Oh, the budget discussion up to the top, or like, can we do that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, moving... Item E to item B. And then, you know, B to C.
Eleven E?
Eleven, yeah.
Eleven E to eleven A.
And then just...
To B, because we gotta do the amendment first.
Oh, that's right.
And then changing the other ones down.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Rice. Any discussion? Seeing no one jumping forward, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda with the one change, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to presentations, of which there are none. We do have a public hearing tonight regarding proposed budget for fiscal year '23. Mr. Stooldryer, do you have anything you want to add before we open up the public hearing?
No, thank you.
And with that, we'll open the public hearing for fiscal year '23 recommended budget at 7:02 PM. And if anybody chooses to address the public, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm just glad to see we have public.
I can't believe it. Shocked.
There's no one online.
All right, see, when no one is present, jumping forward, and no one is online, we will close the public hearing. Do we need a motion on that, by any chance? For that to be formal?
I don't think so.
We'll close the public hearing for fiscal '23 recommended budget at 7:03 PM. That brings us to item seven on the agenda, public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. Note again that if you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And being that we have no one still online, is that correct?
That's correct.
I won't give instructions for that. And with that, we'll open up the public comment at 7:03 PM. Seeing no one coming forward, and still no one online.
No.
We'll close public comment at 7:03 PM. No closed session that I'm aware of. Always pause here, just in case somebody decides they have to have one. That brings to item nine on our agenda, report boards and comments. We do have a number of applications, a number of openings. I do have an understanding that, you know, ZBA is probably the most pressing with some people that are leaving. My understanding is we may have some additional applicants. The sidewalk committee I want to lift up, even though that's not something we appoint to, I just, if the planning commission needs to appoint someone to the sidewalk committee, and if you have someone that has interest, you might want to steer them to the planning commission, maybe Mr. Rodney Nanny even. And I think everybody else is pretty aware of the other positions we have. Something up, clerk?
Somebody pulled in.
With that...
There's one for the water authority, what about that?
Recreation Water Authority?
Yes, yes, sir.
We, Chiodini, I believe, her application was in, I believe Shan's, Stan's, Shingles, excuse me. The other member from the township, his seat's not expiring, correct?
Correct.
Oh.
I mean, obviously, if someone else would like to serve, they have the opportunity. That's why we try to leave those application processes open. So with that, Planning Commission, EDA, sidewalks, and ZBA updates by our Community and Economic Development Director, Mr. Nanny, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll start today with our sidewalks and pathways prioritization committee. As was mentioned, we do have one vacancy. The, they had a meeting scheduled for October 27th. There was an issue with having a quorum of members present, so that meeting ended up being canceled. Their, their next meeting is actually a joint discussion with our planning commission, and that'll be in January. So that, that's where we are with that committee. Our zoning Board of Appeals did not meet in November, but they, they will be meeting on December 7th, the regular meeting day for December. They have had an application for interpretation of the zoning ordinance text related to the B-7 zoning district. So they'll be having a hearing on that item. The, our, our EDA board also had a quorum challenge for their regular meeting date in November, but they knew that ahead of time, and, and they made the decision to reschedule that meeting. So they will be actually meeting next Tuesday, the 29th, for their, for their November, November meeting. They'll have three items on their agenda. The, the annual authorization for participation in the outreach of Michigan banners program that we have for the East DDA District, they'll be authorizing that. They're also look, going to be looking at updated rate schedule from MMI Industries for the cleanup that work that they do along the Pickle Road corridor for next year. And, and finally, they'll be reviewing the bids for the project at 2120 Yance Drive. This is the property that, that they purchased in the East DDA District to light a building in site. They purchased that so we could clean that site up. Purchased that up tax foreclosure earlier this year. They did receive four bids, so those bids will be on their agenda to take a look at and move ahead with the successful bidder, to see that building come down and that site's, site cleaned up. So those are the items on the EDA board. Our planning commission did meet on the 15th. They held a regular meeting, and they had several items on their agenda as well. They reviewed the Prestige Center assisted living facility site plan. This is the planned unit development project that you saw earlier this year. This, the application here is for the site plan approval related to that, so, and it was requested as a combined preliminary and final site plan by the applicant. The planning commission took action only on the preliminary site plan. They found it wasn't ready for final site plan approval. We, I was talking to a project engineer today, and we, I'm expecting to see that updated site plan come in tomorrow for their December meeting. The, they also had a conversation about the master plan. Looking at, as I think we talked before, about that next year is the five-year review for the master plan. As part of starting that conversation, we introduced to them again the redevelopment-ready communities program. This is a program from the state of Michigan. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation runs it, that they offer basically the opportunity to be certified as a redevelopment-ready community if we choose. That's actually not the most important element, as far as I'm concerned. What I, what I feel is most important is they do have a number of best practices that they encourage local governments to adopt. We've actually adopted a lot of them already. We already do a lot of the things that are recommended. But as part of looking at the master plan, this is an area where, where the redevelopment-ready communities program has some very helpful direction, and as I said, some best practices to consider. So introduce those to the planning commission, and they are interested in looking at further. They are going to be looking at, at a draft resolution to basically participate in that program with the idea of recommending, perhaps recommending that to you. Ultimately, it would be a board decision, but to the boards, the planning commission's looking at that topic in December to consider whether to recommend something to you or not for, for participation as part of this master plan project. So that, that, they discussed that, and they, we also looked at an issue that, that has come up with Russia property on South Lincoln Road, south of Broomfield Road. This is a piece of property that, that has some zoning-related challenges. There, there are some, the property is zone residential, yet it has a commercial building on it. It dates back all the way to our first zoning ordinance, and a special use permit that was issued in 1973. And so we, staff, we were looking at this and, and brought forth a, a proposal to, for the planning commission to consider, looking at perhaps a township-initiated rezoning of that parcel and perhaps others in the immediate area that have, have some, some land use conflicts related to, to the zoning. So the planning commission did take a look at that. They didn't take any formal action on it, but did have a pretty spirited discussion about, about that topic. And it is a topic I think that will be looked at again as part of the master plan for that, for that area. The property owner happened to be there as well. He's obviously been communicating with, with them about potential use of that property, and they indicated they may pursue rezoning application themselves, which certainly is an option as well. So that's where that stood. And then the last item on their agenda was the continued discussion of a set of zoning ordinance amendments, text amendments. Might call it the second punch list of items. These are items that have come up using the ordinance that we felt, staff felt that there was an opportunity to make some adjustments. And so those, as I said, those are in the planning commission's hands right now. They have set a hearing date for December on those amendments, and so you will be seeing them at some point down the road, having a hearing as set for their next meeting. That is the extended planning commission's activities, and with that, I'm happy to answer your questions if you may have.
All set, thanks, Ryan.
We're quiet tonight on this one, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nanny.
Thank you.
That takes us to item nine, see on our agenda, board member reports. Trustee Hope?
I went to a road commission meeting on November 10th. Had quite a busy week that week. It was a week that, well, the weekend before was when we had that windstorm come through, so they had a lot of trees go down. So they had crews out all over the county taking care of trees. They were prepping their equipment for snow removal, which was probably a smart idea after how the snow weaved, so they were prepared. Rosebush Road, I told you guys before, there was three miles, two and a half miles, that got repaved because of the damage done by equipment from the windmills. That's all done. I went down that the other day, it was pretty nice looking. And then, they talked about next year, the Isabella Road, or the Broomfield Road project from Michigan to Isabella. They just announced that it's gonna, it's gonna happen in May of next year when it starts. They want to wait till CMU's out of school.
Yeah.
That's all.
So would you do me a favor, next time you go? The Lincoln Road project is great, it looks great, by the way. And I had an opportunity to see Tony, the road commission administrator, and thank for all the work that put, was put into that. But I'm curious about two things. There's some ingress egress areas that are there that weren't there before.
Yeah, I noticed that, yeah.
Are, were those privately paid, or?
I have no idea.
Or did taxpayers pay for those?
I have no idea.
And the, the one on fixed property seems dangerous. Did you see that one?
Yeah.
It, it just, it goes in, and it's elevated, and then it just stops, and it's four or five-foot drop, and I'm afraid of somebody pulling in and...
Maybe that's as far as their easement goes, I don't know. And then maybe it's up to FIG to... I know I mentioned something like that on that Rosebush Road project, because there's a guy that, I don't know how this could happen, but he has a round bale, round bale business, round bale hay. And he always parks his pickup and long trailer, gooseneck trailer on the road, and pulls up there and loads them on the road. I mean, I don't know how that can happen, but whatever. I guess that's Isabella Township's problem, or the road commission's problem. But I know they had to go in, I mentioned that, and they went in there and they put some gravel in there, and they said they could only go so far, because that was the, the owner's responsibility.
Yeah, it just, it just seemed odd, and if, if nothing's gonna be done, maybe a barrier of some sort, so that at night, my fear is somebody at night's gonna use it as a turnaround and pull too far in. You seen this?
No, I haven't.
Oh, okay.
I'm glad I haven't. I have a heart attack.
Trustee Brown, you've seen it, you live, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Yeah, it does.
It looks bad.
What was the other?
What's that?
What was the other thing?
Just, I'm kind of curious about, there's egresses that weren't there before that are now paved, and some of them curbed.
Yeah, I saw that.
And those, those weren't on the plan that, that we were given, and I'm kind of curious if those were privately paid, or did taxpayers pay for those?
Okay, I'll ask.
Thank you.
One thing I noticed about it too is a light. I mean, it's dark, so...
Oh, just a, not a traffic light, but a illumination?
Yeah, just a night, like a street light or whatever. It's dark there when you go by there at night.
Yeah, that's a good point, we should have that.
Then, I got a deal going with, I have a deal going with McGurk's, too, to make it look better. I had some CRP ground, and I told Mark, talked to Mark about this. If McGurk's can move these trees off my property, they're gonna put some nice pine trees right around that curb, around that corner. So I just want to get rid of them, and I said, if you guys can move them, as long as you move a couple up by my yard.
Oh, that's funny.
So he's checking into it, so, but it does look good, they have some nice pine trees out there.
Good. Any other questions? Clerk Cody? I'll just note that, met with Clerk Cody yesterday, and she's still closing up the election, for those that aren't aware, that her job continues on that.
I have a question for you. When I was at the, when I was at the county meeting, Clerk Lux said that they found two people that voted in this state, another state, and they sent them to the prosecutor. Did we get any of that with the same days?
I looked up all of them, no.
Okay.
I went through all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Treasurer Rice?
Um, so, Mr. Nanny already said we did not have a sidewalks meeting, so I won't have that till January, but it is tax time, and taxes are gonna be in mailboxes. I'm taking them to the post office on the 30th, so first of December, they should be in people's mailboxes.
They're due by February?
February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Thering?
Mr. Nanny did a wonderful job, so I'm, I'm all set. I do thank you, sir.
It's nice that he does that, huh?
It is very nice.
Yeah. Trustee Bills?
I had a couple things. I attended the Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting on November 15th, and a couple things. So the administrator's report, she noted that she had attended the All Souls Day in Lansing, where all the cremains that are unclaimed, I didn't know anything about this before, so I saw, it was interesting, all of the cremains that are unclaimed go to Lansing for a mass, you know, burial or something? Anyway, or at least there's a service, okay? So, yeah. So that's for people that, you know, their family never showed up for them, or whatever. Is that terrible? Anyway, so there's that. And then, they, I mentioned this before, but they are, they have assembled a committee, and they've, just in a couple weeks, managed to get it, all the appointments for the members of the committee for doing a self-insured option, and they are, they are all, they're gonna work on that hard, so that they can get an option of self-insurance, rather than paying these high insurance premiums going forward. And then the other thing is that they are going to, the adopted resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreements with townships within Isabella County to provide online access, because sometimes these out, out-county townships don't have very good internet service, so they wanted to offer that as a service to the townships, to let them host a page on their, on their site, or whatever, I don't know how many pages, but, because they have a, a pretty upgraded site that they have recently redone. I don't think, it's, you know, she even mentioned, she didn't think Union Township, you know, would probably be doing that, but we, it's, it'd probably be a good idea to just have a mention on there anyway, you know? And then, they had a whole bunch of crops that were in the farmland agreement thing, and that's about all I got. Thank you.
Trustee Brown?
I'm gonna report.
And the EDA meets next week.
Oh, wait, wait, I got one more thing.
Sure.
I'm sorry, it was on the back of my notes. But Clerk Lux said, "Union Township, thank you." Exclamation point. High-speed tabulator took their time for a recount from six to seven hours down to one hour. Kudos Lisa Cody. Three exclamation points. I, that's how, what I, I, you know, estimated. Numerous, numerous FOIA's after the election, and they, they pulled six precincts for a live count. But anyway, she said she's gonna be pursuing a grant to get a high-speed tabulator, because she's so impressed, mostly with Lisa Cody, but with, also with our tabulator. That's all.
Those were good words to add.
Yeah.
And, and I don't really have anything, because EDA, as mentioned, didn't meet, because it's the Michigan holiday that we don't always take as a holiday, but nobody goes to work anyways on November 15th.
I did, and I went to a meeting.
I worked, too. In any event, that brings us to item 10 on our agenda, consent agenda. Be happy to entertain any motions, and who have warrants?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Support.
And I had warrants, and everything's fine.
Motion by Rice, support by Bills. Everybody's looked through any issues? Seeing no one jumping forward, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. That takes us to new business. We'll try to move through this stuff, so that our clerk could be here for most of our work, hopefully. Item A, discussion of the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment number two. I trust everybody's had a chance to read through that. And with that, Mr. Stooldryer, do you have anything you'd like to add in introduction?
I do not. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. I know that we're trying to get on to the FY '23 budget, so...
Very detailed report.
I'll just note that I met with our manager earlier and asked two questions briefly on the planning commission, that almost $23,000 in reduction for per diems. And I thought, did we even budget that much for, for per diems? And the answer was, I think it was in oversight last year, so essentially bringing that down in line. So I did go check our 2023 recommended budget, and it doesn't have that same oversight. I think $12,000 was budgeted for this.
Yeah, I will comment on that. The original budget, and that's, the original budget for the per diem was $17,000 for 2022. 2021, we spent just under $9,000, 2021, just spent under, just under $10,000. We did budget purposefully the 17th K, just in case we have additional meetings. We didn't have that this year. The $22,000 that I think you mentioned is a net of two line items in that department, so that was not all per diem, so I'll just add that clarification.
Well, I think that's why it caught my attention originally, was listed as per diem in the, in this document, but the other thing I'll just lift up, that I was thrilled by, if you didn't notice, is the increase for state revenue sharing.
Yeah.
A nice little chunk that we were not anticipating. Obviously, we don't always know until it comes in, but, yeah, yay, yay state, thanks for helping us out. Any other questions or comments on the motion? Oh, we haven't had a motion yet, sorry. Is there a motion anybody would like to make, or additional questions for our manager?
I'll motion to approve the FY 2022 budget amendment number two for the general fund, East DDA Fund, West DDA Fund, ARPA Fund, and Tribal 2% Grant Fund. Do you want me to read the note? Do you want me to say that it was no...
We don't need the note, dude.
I don't think...
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Hope. The only other thing I want to add to this, part of the amendment on the Tribe 2% Grant Fund, I think everybody saw what I had sent out regarding the generosity from the tribe, so I want to give a public thank you to them, what they've contributed to is, is helping defray some of those costs that were unanticipated by, unanticipated by us and the road commission on that Lincoln Broomfield project, and so we thank them for that great contribution. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote on the motion to approve the budget, budget amendment number two.
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. Treasurer Rice?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Howe?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
All yeses.
Motion passes. Thank you. Um, that brings us to item eleven B, which was previously E. Uh, discussion on the fiscal year 2023 budget recommendation. And with that, I don't know if our manager has any additional information like to share at this time or?
No, this was just an opportunity for us, you, to continue your discussion that, uh, you've been having on the 2023 budget recommendation.
Thank you. And with that, floor's ours.
Time to go around, maybe, and ask everybody individually if they have questions.
Sure.
Maybe that'll help. And then maybe Jeff might have five questions and his question four might be my question three.
Okay, great.
So, we can scratch them off.
I like your idea.
Alright.
Trustee Brown?
We did ask some questions last time. I'm, I'm good right now until we get further into this.
Okay.
I just have a bunch of comments that I'd like to read, but I can wait till everybody asks questions. It doesn't matter to me.
Start with your comments.
Start?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so regarding the ARPA funds, I cannot vote for ARPA funds to be used for water or sewer improvements, uh, when only seventy-five percent of the township are utilizing one or more of these services. I don't think it's fair to use this money to benefit part of the citizenry. And we have the ability to borrow all of that money from the state, uh, Clean Water Revolving Fund and Wastewater Revolving Fund, so at a very low rate. And some of that money can also be granted back. So, for me, that's a, that's a non-starter. As a, as opposed to that, the industrial land north of Pickard could be improved. The park at the south end of township that Trustee Howe put forward could be done. And a solar project that would help us in reducing our electricity costs for decades. Also, changing vehicles out for electric. And then the second thing I wanted to talk about was fees. Uh, we all got a memo from Patty Sandell?
Patty Sandell.
Patty Sandell, uh, regarding the fees in the local municipalities for certain of these, uh, water turn off, shut on, turn on and shut off fees. Um, and I calculated some of the percentage of increase over it from 2020 to proposed 2023. Um, and one of them is 1,100%. Okay? That's ridiculous. Uh, because I looked in the same period, the wages for those departments have increased about 5.1%. Uh, and water and sewer should be, in my opinion, should be paid for by the quarterly fees and not supported on the backs of our poorest taxpayers. Uh, one of our laborers in that department makes around $37 an hour, which, including the benefits. And I don't feel that it's justified to charge those kind of fees for, uh, a laborer to do these turn off, shut on, uh, things. And so, I think it should be done, do it with the quarterly fees. Um, I, I have a few other comments. They're not really related to specific line items.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
I agree with you on the fees, 100%.
I do, too.
So, I just have a couple more comments.
And please?
Um, we seem to use a lot of outside contractors for surveys and other studies that I think, uh, could be able to be done in-house. But I'm not the manager. I just think that we're probably paying big wages to those people. And we might be well-served to be looking at getting some of that done in our own township. And, um, grant money, uh, there is a new grant application that became available last month, which I have forwarded to, uh, manager and the supervisor, uh, that offers, um, anywhere from a hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars per project for outdoor recreation facilities, which we are doing at Jameson Park to the tune of $215,000 next year. And we could get that completely granted. It's, they wanna focus on, um, you know, uh, health benefits and, and, um, security. So, I just think, you know, um, manager did tell me he's going to apply for that. I sure hope we do. It's available until December nineteenth. And, uh, there's 15 million available this year and 25 million next year. Uh, it seems to be coming out of the state ARPA funds, from what I gathered with the timeline. It seems to be going right along with ARPA. Um, and I, and I would also help fill out the application if staff time is not available. I'm completely available for that. That's all I have and I appreciate it.
So, you hit quite a bit. Would, would members like to talk about specific items or have your questions answered when we come back and address issues? I'm asking the board how they'd like to deal with that. 'Cause I heard at least one item for sure that probably is worth discussing because I know there was support for that.
Yeah, I had a couple of those, um, on my list of questions that Connie had, so.
I'm just asking for input on what would be best to do.
I think we should roll back the prices for those fees, those specific, um, turn off and turn on fees and final read, uh, to 2020 levels.
Would you remain with the 2020 levels?
I sure do. I have it all right here.
I figured you did.
2020, water turn off and on, $20. Proposed for 23, $91. Uh, turn off for non-pay, $15. Now, it's proposed to be $165. Uh, final read, $15 versus $78 proposed. Sewer hookup, 2675 in 2020, $3,700 in 23. Water, 1325 to hook up versus 1650 in 23. And the quarterly water fees have only increased by 15% and the sewer by 16% in the same, uh, time span versus anywhere from 455% to 1,100%. So, I think, you know, we're, we're increasing in the wrong spots. That's where I, what I think. And I think we need to go roll those back and increase the quarterly amounts. That's where I'm at.
Trustee Howe?
Connie, I, I, I agree with you on, on quarterly fees. I think that if we aren't charging enough for quarterly fees to support the maintenance of our sewer and water facilities, then I think they need to increase. I mean, okay, we're talking about taking half a million dollars of ARPA funds to fix a sewer pump. Okay, we've got that right now. What happens four years down the road? Say sewer, say pump number four goes out and that's a half a million dollars. Well, if we don't have the money to fix it, then what are we gonna do? We gonna hope for another ARPA? We gonna hope that some generous citizen gives us a half a million dollars? And I'm not sure, maybe I don't know what I'm talking about here, but in my business, I, I project things. I know like in two years, I'm gonna need a van. So, I'm charging now so I can have the money in two years to pay for that van. I don't look for someone to give me a deal on a van. I mean, I know I'm gonna need it. I just don't understand why our system isn't supporting itself. I mean, and I, these fees probably should have been increased years ago. And now we're getting to an aging system and we're robbing from Peter to pay Paul. And the money that's coming from these ARPA funds, it's special money. I mean, I see these communities, I look at Isabella Township, the improvements they've made to their parks. I know we're using some of it for roads, but other townships are using it to, for road improvements. Um, improvements to their halls and everything. I've been to a lot of township meetings in the last two months and that's where I see their funds going to. I just don't understand why our sewer and water system isn't supporting itself. I'm sure that customers will agree, you know? Maybe they realize that they're getting a deal. But I just think that if you explain to a customer that we're not charging you enough to maintain the system down the road, then I'm sure they'd pay more. I don't like these water turn off and turn on fees. I'm so glad that Patty Sandell did what she did because I hear it all the time. And I think it's important to get people in the crowd and let them express their opinions. So, public, please come to our meetings. Thank you.
I agree with both of them. I'm not gonna repeat everything, so.
Fair enough.
I talk too much, I know.
I'll, I'll say regarding the fees, um, in particularly, um, like the turn off and turn on, I have more of an issue with that one because of who that hurts the most. I mean, the people that are typically needing that. It's not all cases. I mean, I know, uh, people needed water turn on and off for various reasons. But those that get it turned off because of inability to pay puts them behind the eight ball even further when they have to pay that. And now returning on fees and the bill, I mean, I have an issue with that. Um, and, but what we're discussing, I just wanna paint the picture. And I'm not saying, um, I'm against this 'cause I, I think I tried to just say that I agree with at least the water turn on, turn off.
There's more.
Yes, I know.
There's more than one of those.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, what we're talking about is essentially a self-insurance system of sorts. That's how I think of it anyways, is ultimately for water and sewer to maintain themselves, we have to have a certain amount of income into the enterprise funds to cover operations and capital planning, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, we've had discussions about having to raise just overall rates at some point here in the near future to begin to make sure we're covering that. And the staff and has done a lot of work with consultant to make sure that we're, we have that on our radar. But if, if we were to do something like do $20 for the turn on, turn off, that just means we're defraying those costs to the, the user base themselves, right? And I'm not opposed to that. I think in that case, it's okay to help defray those costs by giving it to all of the users. And you're essentially self-insuring to everybody. For those that need to have it turned on and off, they're getting a bit of a break by having an inexpensive one. That's kinda my feelings on that.
$165 for a non-pay is outrageous. It's out, it's unconscionable. I'm not gonna vote for it. That's where I'm at. I'm not gonna do it.
And non-pay, can I ask our manager, non-pay, I'm assuming is someone not paying their bill within, uh, a certain timeframe?
Yeah.
They haven't paid it. I don't know why they didn't pay it.
No, you don't know why, but I mean, i- it's a certain timeframe that that gets triggered, that $165? I'm assuming it's not for a day late.
Non-payment of bills, we go through a process, notification, whatnot. I'm not sure how long it is.
Sixty-five days.
Sixty-five days, thank you.
And then we, if you don't pay it, we turn it off and we charge you for that activity.
It went from 15 to 75 to 120 to 1, it's going to 165.
And I agree with you. That sounds excessive. I can understand the reasoning behind it, but also that's gonna hurt.
The poor people.
Exactly, the most.
And it will make them poorer. And I used to be a poor people, so I don't like that.
So, for my own clarity, the support that I heard from Trustee Howe and Clerk Cody was on these issues as well? I mean, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, no, please jump in. Oh, more of the items that are on there?
Yeah.
Okay. Other comments on Trustee Bills? Thoughts?
Treasurer Rice?
Oh, I'm, I'm good. She brought up some of the things that I had.
Yeah, me, too.
So, all of mine were hit, so.
Well, I guess it would be helpful at this point, um, sp- in particular with some of the items that were, this subset of the lists that you brought up. If, if this board wants to take any action to change that recommendation that we have in front of us, I would suggest that.
Can we come to an agreement on what the fees should be for those?
Propose something, yeah?
I mean, I wanna roll them back to 2020, but, I mean, I think the turn on, turn off non-pay shouldn't be 15. I mean, I'd be good with 45 or 50, but I'm not going to 165, you know? I, I would not do it.
What about the after-hours?
Well, the after-hours, I don't care about after-hours. That, you know, after-hours, that should be where it is. I mean, that's, that's overtime. That's, that's big time, so. That's emergency stuff, so you have to pay for that. Uh, I, everybody pays for overtime.
What would a 25 increase be, like 25%?
25% from?
Like, from what it was originally?
Oh, 25% wouldn't be much. It'd be like 1750 or something, 18 dollars.
I mean, that's like a normal increase for a year, right?
Oh.
You know?
I doubt it. If, if, you know, if some of these towns don't even charge for on-off, then, you know, I think, you know, we have to look at that. Around, there are these towns around us and cities and stuff, so, I don't know. I mean, 15's pretty low. You're not gonna pay for a guy's hourly wage with that. And I think you have to do that, you know?
It probably, is this someone on-call, kinda like an on-call mark?
Not, oh, per diem.
So, what you're, I, I just gotta try to get my head around it. You're describing a tra- of, of fees changing from 20 to recommended 23. They were $15 according to, and I believe it, $15 in 2020. $15 would have been way, way, way too low, you know? If you have any sense, if, if the policy issue is trying to recoup cost for these type of one-off items, 15 was just, it might as well be zero. It did nothing. Uh, so, through the cost-to-service study and the fee study that was done a few years ago, these fees were brought up to, um, to cover the costs. And then they've gone up to, in 21, and they went up again in 22, and they're recommending it again to go up in 23. And they'll be recommended to go up in 24, no matter what the fee is, um, 'cause all our expenses increase. To compare the 2020 fee to anything after that, I think is a bit apples to oranges 'cause you don't, you, you can't, you don't know what the integrity of that 20 fee was. So, yes, it was 15 bucks and now the recommendation is 100 and something. It's a huge percent. But remember, your $15 was not based on anything other than just a number. So, I'll point out that. The, the comment that I've heard a couple times about why the system doesn't pay for itself, I wanna, in fact, it does. It does pay for itself. Otherwise, we'd be borrowing money from a general fund to transfer into the water sewer fund to pay the bills. And we don't do that. In fact, it's not even legal to do it. So, the fact of the matter is, the system is paying for itself. There are several revenue components to each of the systems, whether it's water or sewer. The bulk of the revenue is coming from the quarterly fees, the, um, turn on, turn off, and can, at least on the water side. You got final reads at 4,000, you got turn offs at 4,000. You can spend a lot of time and make a lot of claims and half of them are gonna be accurate. Or at least they'll be, half of them will be missing context, um, over 4,000 bucks. As I said last time, you can move that to zero. Uh, it's not gonna affect the finances of the system. But from a policy question, I think that you need to be focusing on what you want the policy to be. If there are things that occur all over this organization, not just water and sewer, you'll see it in the planning department, you'll see it in the building department, you'll see it in the board review, you'll see it everywhere. The fees that are being charged from a policy perspective, the intent is that the specific users of those particular services are being paid by that user. So, since we're talking about water, turn-offs and turn-ons, that fee is being charged to the person that wants that fee to be, or that service to be performed. Turn-ons, they go to Florida. Turn-offs, they come back to Florida or vice versa. People don't pay the bills. There's a lot of reasons for that. Um, sometimes they just forget and forget, other times they can't afford it, other times, who knows what. Um, I don't concern myself too much with that. It does cost you money to do that. So I think your bigger policy question is, is to what degree do you want fees that where applicable can be charged to the specific receiver of the service, whether it's a positive or negative service, if you want them to pay for it? And if you don't, then we can go through the entire organization and start eliminating fees. And the general taxpayer or the general rate payer will pay for it instead of the specific user of the service. And if that's what you want from a policy perspective, I think that's what you need to be discussing. I don't think it's necessary to spend an inordinate amount of time on four thousand dollars of revenue when your total revenue is a million nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Right.
And, so that's what I have to say about all that.
But I think what I'm hearing is a little different than that, too. And I always try to articulate what our managers articulated in the sense that if we reduce specific fees, um, we should have good reason to do so, and that means it needs to be offset everywhere. But I, what I didn't hear from this group, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, is nobody was suggesting policies where generally the fees aren't covered by the user, correct?
Correct.
What I heard, again, correct me if I heard incorrectly, um, what I heard specifically was like the turn on, turn off. Granted, it could be someone going to Florida for the winter, but when it does hit the poor because they couldn't afford their bill, getting this turn on, turn off fee is just another punch in the gut. That, that's kinda what I heard. Is that reasonable?
That's correct, but also, there's no way it costs a hundred and sixty-five dollars to turn somebody's water off. The guy's making twenty-eight dollars an hour with benefits. So, it doesn't take an hour, or maybe it takes an hour, so if it takes an hour, great. Twenty-eight bucks, or thirty bucks, or thirty-five dollars, I don't care, but not a hundred and sixty-five.
Personnel is not the only cost associated with the fee.
I generally.
Personnel, there's administrative, there's overhead, there's the vehicle, there's the gas.
I agree, but those people are already hired to do the main job.
Costs that amount of money.
Not to do a turn-off, it doesn't.
Well, it does, if you include all the costs.
I'm not gonna put that in there.
I'm not, that's not what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Trustee bills, I'm just saying that a turn-off does cost that amount if you wanna include all your costs.
And how much is that?
It's a hundred and sixty-five, you just told me that.
I just think we should eat some of the costs, cause I think it's too high.
Put it in the general fees. The fees have only gone up eight dollars for water in the last three years. They've gone up a hundred and fifty dollars for a turn-on, or a turn-off for non-pay. That's ridiculous.
Since twenty-twenty?
Yes, sir.
Right. Compared to fifteen dollars.
Yeah, fifty-two dollars to sixty dollars, that's nothing. For a quarter, that's, that's nothing.
Again, I don't, I don't have any skin in this game, but I just want to, where I need to clarify certain statements that are being made, such as the system doesn't pay for itself, or it doesn't cost a hundred and sixty-five dollars to go out and turn something on or off, it does. It is completely within your prerogative to charge whatever you want. I'm not arguing with that. I'm just trying to keep our facts straight.
If the system was paying for itself, we shouldn't need to use, what, eight-hundred-thousand dollars in ARPA funds for it this year? We shouldn't need to do that.
That would just help to phrase some borrowing costs in the future.
I'm not doing.
That's, that's just.
That's not the right way to.
Because I would disagree too, I think.
I mean, if the system is paying for itself, then pay for it.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, it just makes no sense.
That's just a recommendation, trustee. It's a use, people are using ARPA funds to give razors. You can use it with whatever you want.
But it's all getting spent before we even had the priority list.
This is a recommendation. You don't have to approve it.
I don't wanna approve it.
Let's hold off on the ARPA for now.
You haven't voted on anything.
Let, let's stay on, let's, excuse me.
No, it's not.
It's gonna be.
It's only, the only thing that's been spent is what you approved to spend it.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'm sorry.
Hang on, let's stay on task. Let's, we can talk about, we can talk about, excuse me.
Yes, sir. I didn't know.
I'm trying to corral us here? Excuse me?
Yeah.
All right, w- we can talk about the ARPA funds, but let's at least finish the discussion regarding the fees that we're talking about. And when we're done with that, then we can move on to ARPA and other issues. Is that okay? Just to keep us on task.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Director Smith, how much time does it take to do a water turn on and a water shut off? On average?
Um, I would say probably an hour to an hour and a half.
Mm-hmm.
Each.
Yeah.
And that includes the time you have to, you know, you send notices, you have to track those, person has to go and do it. Some of them take longer, some of them take less. If you have to find the curb stop, it's winter, they take longer.
Mm-hmm. Sure. So, at twenty-eight dollars an hour, times an hour and a half, that's gonna be forty-two. Two people?
I, I normally figure for business, two and a half times salary just in general, because of, there's a lot, a lot of other costs. Gas, mileage, et cetera. I mean, that's typical. So, that's not unreasonable to do that.
Why isn't the water turn-off fee for a regular person, a hundred and sixty-five? It's ninety-one they're proposing. Right now, it's sixty-eight, so.
Well, just to be clear, ninety-one is each.
Yes.
So, if you called and said that you wanted your water shut off, we probably charging ninety-one dollars. And then you called at another time and you wanted it turned back on, then you can charge another ninety-one dollars.
Sure, but a non-pay for some reason costs more.
We put those on at the time that we go out and turn them off, and then one-sixty-five is put on all at once. So it's a little bit different. That's why there's two different ones.
It says each on your, on your line item there, it says each, turn on and turn off.
Right, that's the ninety-one.
Oh, the thir- the one-sixty-five is not?
No, the one-sixty-five is just one time.
Okay.
So that, that's all put on at one time, and it's one-sixty-five.
It, it has each on here.
Yeah, that's what I thought I read.
So, it does.
Yeah, we do that just at one time, so.
Oh, come.
We have roughly, you know, twenty to forty turn-off ons each quarter. And those are, those fees are put on. So that was probably an error on my part. It should not be each. It's turn on and turn off for non-pay, it's one-sixty-five. If you have it done at different times, then you get into the ninety-one. That's the difference.
I'm gonna encourage trustee Brown, trustee Theron, and treasure Rice to jump in on this.
Can Lisa ask her questions if she has to go? Maybe we should do that before she has to go?
You're fine.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, I'm okay pausing this for a minute. Okay, Lisa?
I mean, the biggest thing is, is.
For Cody?
You're fine. The fees. I mean, a hundred percent want them changed. I mean, like, we can eat it somewhere else. I know we need to pay that, but, I mean, it's a lot for people that don't have it, and that really bothers me. Um, grant monies, I like, that's awesome. And then I'm glad that we're putting in on that because we can always use it. Um. What else? I don't know.
You'd brought up the, um, South Mission.
Yeah, I think I just read it wrong.
Okay.
Cause I'm not finding it.
Maybe you're thinking it was the Meridian.
Actually, I was reading, somebody came in to talk to me, and then I looked back, and I'm like, well, maybe not. But that question I don't have at the moment. Cause I couldn't find it. Oh, maybe it is. I don't know. I could've read it wrong, but if I didn't, just ask it now, like, the water facilities down by, oh, where the truck is being parked, or that new truck down there on East Mission. It said up, I could be wrong. But it said, what did it say? Remodeling for like a hundred and fifty thousand? Is that that one? Or am I thinking wrong?
There's no remodel.
Okay, so I read it wrong. Like I said, I was reading it, and somebody came in and.
The only thing, the only line item or request in the budget for a hundred and fifty thousand is work at Meridian to the, um, hot, the, um, filters, the iron removal filters. There's that. I, but I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I said. I was like reading, and then somebody came in and I didn't.
But we don't have like a remodel on the building for a hundred and fifty thousand.
Find it again, right? That'd be why I couldn't find it, right? I just wanna throw it off real quick. But, um. What am I on? What else? Oh, ARPA funds, still again, I'd like them to be used as, if we can't use it at a park, use it as the study towards getting that park over there would be nice. I don't know if we can use it for that, but that would be good.
Yeah.
I would be happy with that. You know? No more questions at this time. Those are just my comments.
Oh, appreciate it. All right.
I'm gonna ask, clarify.
Sure.
You say fees. There's four pages of fees in this book. Which fees are you referring to?
The shut-off and the hook-up fee.
The turn on, off, or non-payment?
And, yeah.
Is that what you're referring to?
Regular turn on and off as well.
Regular turn on, turn off.
Yeah, I think those are the only ones that I had issue with, for the, I think, the reasons articulated. I don't have a problem with raising, I don't, I don't wanna lower everything so much that they're not covering the cost. These are directed at, and I realize it is, it's only a percentage of users that we're talking about that get those fees, that are gonna be in that poor category that are gonna hurt dramatically from those.
So the regular business hours, turn on, turn off, where it's been requested by the account holder?
But the after-hours, those are different. You're calling somebody in for something.
We're all in agreement at the act, I think we're.
Well, I, I know, but I'm going to, say I'm going to Florida this winter, and I call the water department to ask to have my water turned off. You're objecting to that fee of ninety-one dollars, cause I'm going to Florida and I want my water turned off. Okay.
Unfortunately, we can't separate those that are, are financially distressed.
You have a separate fee for non-payment.
Non-payment versus request.
The non-payment is usually the ones that are having the struggles. The, the regular business hours are the ones that, you know, they request, or usually, anyway, please correct me if I'm wrong. They're the ones that ask for their water to be turned on and off during normal business hours, and then of course, the after-hours.
So if a person has a non, has a non-payment with no reason call, you're going, they'll get the, the one-time one-sixty-five. Then will they get a ninety-one dollar fee added on to, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, for a turn-off?
It, it's just the one. So we do, so we do shut off quarterly. When we do shut off, anybody that's left the day of the shut-off, that morning, we put, you know, we put all the payments in, and then that fee's added to the bill. And then we shut, you know, the water gets shut off, and then later in the day, or the next day, or a week later, however long it takes them to pay their bill, then we go back and turn it on, and it's one-sixty-five. That, that would be.
It's, oh, not one-sixty-five plus, okay, I'm sorry.
The, the one-time payment of one-sixty-five.
It's the one-time of one-sixty-five. The ninety-one is if somebody calls and needs their water shut off for another reason, you know, they need to do a repair.
Yeah, I, I had to do that. I mean, I get, I get that. I had a leak in the house, and there was.
Yeah, and if you're about.
I had the water shut off, otherwise I'd have leak bearing in the basement, so. It, it had to be done. I, I, it was my issue.
And that's where you get the ninety-one dollars. Some people turn them off and don't turn them back on for quite a long time. Some people do it right away. There's a lot of reasons people turn their water off. A lot of people go to, go south or somewhere warm, so they have their water shut off in November, and then come spring, they have it turned back on, so we have to dispatch somebody out there with the vehicles and everything both of those times, so that's the.
I know, I got it.
So maybe our, talking with the board, thanks, Kim.
Yeah.
Maybe our board is having more of an issue with the non-payment than the on-off.
No. My, my biggest issue is the non-payment, because, I don't know.
I would agree as well.
And, I mean, I mean, I'd be even okay with like raising it to like one-twenty-five, one-thirty. I mean, raising a little, but that's, you know.
Trustee Bills?
If you raise the regular turn on and turn off fee to ninety-one dollars, you're at a hundred and eighty-two dollars for the two services. And that's three-quarters worth of, of water bill.
Yeah.
So, there's no sense in turning it on and off. What you're saying is, we're gonna penalize you for going to Florida, and you know, we have a lot of elderly people, and I don't think that's cool. I just don't think that's cool. I don't, I don't care what anybody says, says that's too high.
Whatever the fee was, I had, I had to repair in my house. It was the, the line going to the meter.
And you paid sixty-eight dollars or forty-five?
I don't know what it was. I, I, I mean, whatever it was, I was charged.
What if it was a hundred and seventy-five?
I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just telling you what my experience was. I had to do it. And I literally, it took me five minutes to fix. It is what it is. But that's something I'm requesting, I think, from what I'm understanding, are, are the biggest concern, we have a concern on many different levels.
Yes, sir.
But the biggest concern is for those that are in need. They're struggling to pay. So therefore, our biggest concern would be the non-payment fee.
I mean, don't get me wrong, there should be a payment fee. I just don't think it should, you know, because if not, like.
I'm trying to wrap my head around what is our biggest, what's our.
But yeah.
If we could, if we could pick one thing, what would we pick?
So, to, just to, just to, yeah, sorry.
Well, understanding a little bit better on the turn on and off, the ninety-one dollars, that is somebody calling in and asking to have that done. The non-payment, nope, they're not, they're not calling to ask to have it done. It's just unfortunately being done. So, we would wanna try to help those people get back on, pay their bill for one, cause they have to pay their bill, but then to get back online. Is that, am I understanding that?
I think I'm picking up what you're laying down. Treasure Rice?
Um, yeah, a, a lot of mine had to do with the, the for non-payment, but I'm gonna play devil's advocate here for a minute. Um, there are individuals that are going to not pay their bill, and they're going to wait until you shut them off before they come in to do the payment. Say they have four or five parcels. Yes, this, you know, is, I'm, I'm sure rare, but I, I don't know. I'm not in there taking the payment, but, you know, there's.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna go.
All right.
I have a long story about that.
Thank you.
Bye, Lisa.
Sorry, I'll shoot you an email. I'll watch the video. Thanks, sorry about that, Ken.
You're good. Um, but you, you need to think about that as well, because we don't know if they're having a hard time or not. Um, and my heart, you know, my heart always goes out to, to people when I, when I hear some of the things they're going through. But we also have to consider the fact that, you know, not all of these non-payments are going to be people not paying their bill because they can't. Um, I feel better knowing that it's not a hundred and sixty-five dollars each for turning it on and off. Um, but I, I, I want you guys to, to think about that as well. I'm not, I'm not saying that, that the fees are where they should be. That's not what I'm saying at all. I am just saying, that's another side you need to consider. Um, that's all.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Theron?
I did. Um, the final read, is it okay if I ask? The final read, I'm, I'm assuming you're gonna, if I ask you, you're gonna ask her.
If I can't answer it.
The, the final read is seventy-eight dollars, so that's, if, if I'm moving out of my home, I sold it, and I'm heading down the road, I'm calling you up, and I'm, hey, I'm out the tent, you'll sneak in there and do a final read. I'm calling you up and I'm, hey, I'm out the tent, you'll sneak in there and do a final read. Is that, is that what that fin, is that what that means?
Except for the sneaking in part, you know?
Well, I'm sorry, you, I, I didn't mean it that way, I meant you'll come to my establishment and do a, a final read.
Do a final read.
Now, if I understand correctly, I have a little device on there, so you don't actually have to walk up to the house, you just need to get close to the house, is that correct?
It depends on the house, some of them you have to go up, we have some that have MX shoes, which you, they're a radio, and then some of them, 'cause they haven't all been changed over,
Okay.
have, where you have to walk up and read them with a touch pad, you know, it's on the outside of the house.
Okay.
Very rarely do we have to go in unless the meter's not working, but it is where you go out. And then that, that fee also, you know, then we have to, then we have to prepare a, a bill and mail that out. That's part of all of that.
Well, isn't that part of the quarterly fee though?
No, because it's done within the quarter, it's done outside of our regular billing cycle.
That isn't something you could just do the final read and then send it with everything else?
No, because you need to, you need to send that bill to the previous person and then they pay that and then the new person, 'cause we bill quarterly, you would do the same thing even if you billed monthly. You need to, you need to just, you know, stop their bill on that day, you read the meter and then you charge them for the water they used.
In the senior...
And then use that...
Is that the same for an apartment, if you have an apartment, then? So if I have an apartment somewhere and, or is that, is that, um, to the, does that go to the whoever owns the establishment?
It, it varies, some of the landlords keep them in their name, others change them each time their renter moves in and out. It, it just depends on the landlord. Ultimately, the bill stays with the property, but a lot of, a lot of landlords have their tenants call in, change the bills in their name, final read's done, bill's sent to the previous tenant and then the new bill starts for the new person, so there's a lot of that that goes on.
With a seventy-eight dollar charge? It, I mean, if that's what it costs, that's what it costs, I just, I look at, you know, I paid around eleven thousand dollars when I purchased my property for, and water assessment, which is what it was, I mean, that's what I had to do, I chose to live there. So, I, when it comes to fees, I just, it costs what it costs. To me, it doesn't seem, I know you have to have somebody go out there, you don't really have to interact with the, the tenant or the homeowner.
That can't possibly take very long either.
Well, I'm sure that's what it costs, it just doesn't, it just doesn't seem, just doesn't seem right, but... I guess if, if I have to make a statement, my biggest concern is the non-payment fee. Prior to the conversation, I thought otherwise about the other ones. The final read, talking to the board members if we have a recommendation. The final read, I'd like to see that changed a little bit too, but my, my biggest concern is the, the, uh, non-payment, non-payment fee, I think that's the one that, that probably mean the most.
I agree, I agree with that statement.
Helping with, helping citizens that cannot...
Trustee Bills?
Yeah, you had pretty, pretty, previously mentioned that when you estimate fees, you do two and a half times somebody's salary.
Typically, if I'm ballparking something, then cost, yeah.
But you're, you're a profit business, correct?
I, I look at that as cost of doing business.
You're a for-profit business, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, I don't wanna make a profit, I want to do exactly what it takes. And I find it hard to believe that somebody that makes, let's just say thirty, let's round it up to thirty dollars an hour, a laborer that makes thirty dollars an hour, even if you went one and a half hours, like forty-five dollars, I'd be willing to do that across the board with these fees, that's where I'm at, I mean, I'm not, I can't be doing those kind of fees. So either I am the one dissenting vote on this or whatever, but I am just not, I don't think that that's cool. And, and, and they should be paid by the quarterly fee.
Trustee Brown, can I urge you to jump in?
I'm glad you said that, I wanted to hear what Jeff missed. Well, I did, um, uh, get some calls and talks to some constituents on this. Um, Trustee Hulk and I had a, a, a conversation, um, via phone. Um, and I told them, uh, that I would reach out and, and talk to some people and I did, and there are some concerns, there definitely is. And I appreciate that, Trustee Hulk. Um, there are some concerns that we talked about, uh, you know, being in the construction industry and, and dealing with the people, the, the contractors that deal with us every day, whether it's Isabella, Melon, Gratchett County. Um, their, their, their concerns weren't so much about the non-payment fees that I talked to them about, was the, is just the on and off fees, more so that they were concerned about. Uh, these are business owners that I talked to, um, and there are some concerns there and I, I, I understand that. Um, I, uh, but, but I'm, I think with, um, uh, trustee bills, uh, I, I do, I do feel with the, um, the non-payment, that, that there, there is an issue there and I have a soft spot for that, for sure, and I definitely understand that. The other charges, um, we, we, we have to protect what we have also here i- in the township. We, I, I, I'm, I'm scared to, we could eliminate every charge and say, yeah, let's give it all away, but what, what do we have in a year or two is my, is, is a serious concern. If we're basing and, and our charge is off the, uh, two thousand twenty level, um, we, we know the changes that have been made in the last three years has just been unbelievable in, 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 in cost, labor cost, material cost. So that, that's concerning. Um, with that being said, for me, I think, uh, if, if I have any issue of any of the cha, uh, cost or charges that we, we put out there would be, uh, uh, I would wanna look at the non-payment, um, issue more than anything else. Um, I believe the manager that a hundred and sixty-five dollars is exactly what that costs to go out there probably doesn't cover everything from the truck, the insurance, the blah, 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 all the way down as a business owner. The business owner's sitting here and know exactly what we talk about when we start putting the dollars and cents to it. Um, but with that being said, there, there is some concern in the community. And, and I did get to talk to about eight people, um, which did voice some concerns with, um, charges, uh, in, 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 in Union Township. Some of them went on to give me quite a ear, earful about some of the stuff. Um, but yet they are business owners looking out for themselves too, so just as we are trustees here for Union Township. Um, I guess, co, uh, I guess to, to round this all up and come back around to exactly how I feel about it, it's not a huge sum of money, it's just not a huge sum of money, um, that we're dealing with. So... I, I know last meeting I was very straightforward that I don't think any of these charges needed to be changed, that we had to protect the township, that we had to protect our, our facilities. If we want our, our water and sewer departments to look like they do and we can go out there and walk through the buildings now and eat off the floors, that, um, th- th- these are the costs that incur, that, that we incur as residents to have the facilities that we have. So with that being said, I totally haven't made up my mind one hundred percent on how I go here, but this, this is feelings that I'm just throwing out there, kinda talking aloud now amongst us, so that's just kinda...
I appreciate your comments, 'cause I was wanting to hear where, where your thoughts were.
And that's not kinda, it's not kinda where I am, it's, it, I'm just trying to feel this process and feel through this and feel every one of the trustees and the managers and the staff's feelings. But overall, I, I'm here to protect this township, I'm here to protect the constituents and the facilities and the staff of this township, and, and I don't wanna lose any of that.
And I, can I jump in?
Mm-hmm.
Um, our, our manager said that we're talking like four thousand dollars and I don't think we're picking on this particular line item, um, 'cause we don't generally go after four thousand dollar line, line items. It's, this was more the principle, I think, of...
Right, right.
Yeah, a- a- and so, nothing I've heard here, and I wanna state this for our manager too, so it's clear to him, nothing I've heard, so raise your hand, holler, whatever you need to, if you disagree. None of us are saying that we just need to lower fees across the board, that the, the users of typical township fees should pay for those fees, is that an accurate statement?
Correct.
From our board, okay. The, the issue that we've been discussing is, uh, more, for lack of a better turn, term, humanity perspective? Is that reasonable? And we, I think we all realize that by cutting costs or, or income in a particular line item, we have to make that up somewhere else and, and that's okay in this particular instant, instance because of the empathy or the sympathy that we're all feeling for some, is that accurate? Okay, do we need to take, does the board feel like they need to take any action on this tonight? We do have one additional meeting.
I wanna wait for Clerk Cody to be here for any kind of an action, honestly.
Although we have...
Then, then let's move on, um, go ahead.
We do have to give staff something to work with.
Yep.
Well, uh, it, so let me just go with the process a little bit with you. At some point, I would anticipate that a board member would, and I'm guessing it was, it'd be at the December meeting, and I think this is what's happened in the past. A board member will make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three budget with this out, this in, this, and then y'all gotta get four, four votes. So that's what I'm anticipating.
Yeah, okay, I agree.
Well, I'd like to see where we can get, where all of us can vote on it, ideally. I mean, that may not happen, but that's the ideal situation.
That would be ideal for me.
Where you get seven votes?
Ideally, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, it may not happen, that's ideal. Um, the, the other option, I suppose, too, is we could take individual motions to, um, amend the proposed budget and then approve that amended proposed budget if we need to.
I like to make a motion to amend the proposed budget. Water...
I'm sorry, but it's a recommended budget, it's, there's nothing to, to vote on, it's a recommended budget. When you, when you do it, you're gonna approve the budget. Do you wanna bring you back another recommended budget with the changes? 'Cause then it wouldn't be a recommended budget.
I think the point would be more that we all agree moving forward and we're done with that discussion then, right?
I'm done with it for now.
Okay.
I'm just making a note about this, so that if a motion is made,
Yeah.
you know, as we go, if there's more, I'll just recommend everybody else keeps adding to that.
All right, so...
Therefore, on the fifteenth, we'll have some discussion and then a motion would be made with one done or all of...
Yeah, and, you know, you, so for instance, a motion's made to approve the twenty-twenty-three budget with
With the exception of...
a turn-on, off fee for non-payment of fifteen dollars. And then y'all can discuss that and agree on it, and, you know...
Okay, so let's move on, um, I think we began a little bit of discussion regarding ARPA and that was...
I was gonna say, did...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, well, actually, I had just a general statement I wanted to say. This is something I just believe, and I believe that the staff has done exactly what we asked them to do by putting this budget together. I also believe though, talking with our board, that it's okay not to agree with the recommendation. So we can all just kinda talk about this. We don't have to get upset or fired up about what's going on. We've got great staff to answer questions and, and we're gonna get there. And, uh, so I just wanted to say that, um, I think that's all I have for that, so let's just, well, I do have some fee questions, but it's not, I'm not having, I don't have an issue with the cost of the fee necessarily, I just have a question about the fees, is that...
I'm okay with that, unless there's objection? No?
Okay, so it's, uh, page three of other on fees, which would be just the page before the water. I think there's four, four pages for fees, it's page three. Um, the first question is the, um, like a prelim, a preliminary and a final site plan, there is... One second, maybe I gave you the wrong page.
That's right, no worries.
Did I give it to you?
You mean the economic development page.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's page, it's the second page, isn't it?
Page ten.
Yeah.
Yes.
Preliminary and final site plans, there's a fee, a review fee, is that a one-time review fee? For, we'll just say preliminary site plan, is that like a one-time?
That's with application.
Yes, it's, it's, uh, it's a, it's a fee for the application for preliminary site plan approval.
So before you bring it to us?
Right.
So if you bring it to, when I say us, the planning commission, I'm sorry.
Right, yep.
So you bring it before the planning commission, is it okay if I, correctly with Rodney, or would you prefer?
Drag it to me, please.
Yes, so, the planning commission. They'll review it, it goes, comes to the planning commission, the planning commission will accept it with, uh, what's the word? They have to make a few changes. Okay, so now, does it have to be reviewed again with an additional fee?
It's an app, it's a fee at application, so if somebody applies for, if somebody makes an application for a preliminary site plan review, there's a bunch of paperwork they gotta submit and all kind of stuff and they have to pay six hundred and fifty dollars. And that is designed to, um, cover the costs of reviewing that and getting it prepped for the planning commission. And any notices or any of that kind of jazz that may need to occur, that's all part of, that's what that fee's paying for. And then it arrives at the planning commission and the planning commission considers the application and then they approve it, deny it, might approve it with conditions, I'm not sure how that works with the preliminary, 'cause it's preliminary to begin with.
Right.
Uh, it's probably being approved, you know, you gotta make these changes if you wanna bring it back and have us consider it as a final. But, um, so that, that's that, it's a one-time fee.
It's a one-time fee, that, I'm sorry, that's what I wanted to know, if we, 'cause there are times we, whether it's preliminary or final site plan, we will, we will apply conditions, not every time, but there, a lot of the times there are things, housekeeping, things that they need to do, we don't charge them an additional fee then for that.
Correct.
Okay.
If they were to withdraw their application or resubmit it, I think we'd charge them a fee again.
I understood, understood. Along the same lines, then at the bottom of the page, the zoning board of appeals. So zoning board of appeals, somebody's come to the, somebody has come to the economic and development director and it just didn't, whatever it was just didn't go through, so they wanna go to the zoning board of appeals. They would pay that fee.
Depending on what they're asking the zoning board of appeals to do. It, there's a, a fee schedule here.
Yep.
And, so the, you know, the, the zoning code has a, a process built into it, an approval, administrative, an approval process. Some things are approved administratively, some things are approved at a planning commission level. If an applicant feels that they have, um, that they feel they have cause to appeal that decision, which is their right in many cases, then there are avenues to the zoning board of appeals. So then they have to make an application to the zoning board of appeals to appeal whatever it is they're doing. And depending on what they're doing, that's... And depending on what they're doing, that's gonna cost money. There are notices that are required, there's work to be done, there's, and those fees are designed to, we pay per diems to the ZBA member, you know, whatever the costs are, we're trying to recoup those. And so that the appellant is the one paying for them. And if, if you want a special meeting of the ZBA, we're gonna charge us six hundred and fifty bucks, cause, you know, costing somebody to do something.
I, well, I understand that, I, in fact, that wasn't the one I had highlighted, it was more, I was thinking more along the lines of really the one part where the applicant originally went to, it's already gone through, so they really don't need to go through it again, that's what I was thinking. But there's more to it than just that, it all depends on what the applicant, applicant is asking for of the ZBA, that's what I was.
Yes, cause the, a decision may have been made at, at an administrative level.
Yep.
And to appeal that, I think, and I haven't even looked, and I don't memorize. That's gonna cost less to handle than if they're appealing a planning commission.
That's, that's what I needed, that's what I was, I, that's what I needed, thanks. Okay, that's, the rest of the stuff I got, we're gonna run into, so.
Okay, so, Connie, trying to just readdress your comments from the beginning. Uh, we had good, good discussion regarding the fees, ARPA was another one that you brought up.
Yes, sir.
Um, everybody remember the comments, this was a while ago now. I know you had comments, you wanna start off a little bit on your thoughts, and, and the.
Were we gonna go around and ask questions if they all have questions yet?
We, we, didn't do that yet?
Yeah, we did that.
James was, and then, we were gonna go to each individual person.
We didn't get to you yet.
Well, did, I don't know if you, we were on James, we haven't gone to him yet.
We're dealing with her, hers there.
Okay.
James still has to go, and then.
You're good then.
But.
Up until, yeah, no, I mean, I'm sure whatever the next subject is, I'll.
Alright, Fraser Rice.
I'll just wait for that subject to come along.
Um, we hit on mine, mine was basically the fees and then ARPA. I had questions on, um, ARPA, um, I wasn't at the last meeting, so I didn't hear a lot.
And I, I really hit mine last time, and you all got, we all got to kinda hear those and, um, so I'll pass it to you.
Couple, and these are probably just simple ones. Um, trustees dues and fees, seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars, what's that all cover?
Sure, you know the detail.
Can you reference?
I'm sure it's MTA and maybe.
Those kinds of things.
Right, maybe, um, council of governments, stuff like that.
Okay, can you reference where that's at?
What's that?
Can you reference where that's at, yeah?
Under trustees.
The membership and dues, is that the line item?
Yep.
Yeah.
Middle Michigan Development Corporation, ten thousand, MTA dues, training, seventy-five hundred.
Okay.
Chamber of Commerce.
Alright, um, I know we're gonna get a couple of pickups, has anybody checked with the deal like the city does? I don't know if we wanna do that or not, the city gets new vehicles every year.
They lease their vehicles.
What's that?
They lease their vehicles.
They have a lot of expense into them, though, I mean, I just wonder if it might be something in the future that we might wanna look into. So.
Or, or even the electric.
Well, when it comes to that. Eighty-one hundred dollars for professional services, that's fifty-one hundred for the trustees, thousand for the clerk, or, thousand for the clerk, thousand for the trust, treasurer, and thousand for the supervisor, what's the, what are those for? Professional development, like what are we?
Uh, in, in, in the trustee department?
Well, if you had all three of them to get, if you had like trustee department, then you go to the supervisor, it's a thousand, you go to the clerk, it's a thousand.
Development.
Right, what's all that?
That, that's to provide money in the event that the board members, trustees, or a clerk, or treasurer, want to, say, attend MTA training or do some professional development, so we have some money appropriated for that.
Alright, sounds good.
And that, that's kinda called for in your policy governance, cause you need an educated.
In the, um, in this, like, summary, it shows that, on the first page, it shows a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for, um, support for the Bamber Pickard Street traffic light out here. And then, the resurfacing of Broomfield Road from Mission to Isabella, but then in the budget, it shows a hundred and fifty. It shows a hundred for Broomfield and, on Broomfield, and then fifty down here, so I just wondered what it is. Is it a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy-five?
I might have to get back to you, I'm, I, I gotta see where the two places are.
Yeah, they're in here, I just, you know, I'm just gonna fish through them all right now, but it shows Pickard Street, fifty thousand cost share. And then, Broomfield Road, cost share of a hundred thousand, but it shows on the, on the summary that you had here, maybe it was just a misprint. But, shows a hundred and seventy-five thousand for funding for those projects.
If you look, um, at fire, um, the second, or the second page, it's two bullet points above, if that helps you.
Right here, yeah.
Yep.
It's page nine of twelve in the general budget. And it's under line item one oh one, four four one, nine six seven, top middle of the page. You got any more?
I don't know which is the right number.
Okay.
But I can get back to you on the twenty-five.
Okay, well, just, yeah, yeah, alright. Two spots on here lists John Bebo, and I just don't know why individually, it shows retirement for him for sixty-five hundred, like in the sewer and water. Is there a reason that he was singled out individually?
In, in the notes, uh, we probably put the name, but what we're doing is, when peo, when we anticipate people are gonna retire.
Yeah.
We get a sense of it, or maybe they've indicated they're getting ready to.
Yeah.
Then we wanna put some money aside for their lead bank payouts.
Okay.
That's what that is.
Okay. Um, one other thing I had is, I firmly believe that we need to increase the clerk's salary. Um, I realize next year, there's not as many elections, but we can't have clerks working like they do for what they make, I mean, we're not gonna have people running again. If she decides not to run again, I mean, I'm sure whoever is gonna run, they're gonna say, hey Lisa, what do you do? And, if you're upfront and honest, I mean, it might be hard to find someone to, to do that. I mean, every township that I've gone to, they were all, all the clerks, um, you've been to MTA me, or to council of governments meetings, and I was at a council of governments meeting one night, and there were probably nine township clerks there, and they're all, hey man, a proposal, two passes, I'm not running again.
Yep, that's across, I mean, there's a lot of people, a lot of clerks around the state.
I brought, I brought up the same issue with manager when I was asking him, one-on-one, my, my initial questions that I shared this last time. And with Prop two, my concern is, we really don't understand what all that means. In fact, I talked to Lisa about it yesterday, and I'm like, what does that actually mean, she's, she's scared of it. Um, so I, you know, there's gonna be a hit, but, um, in, in doing that, I asked our manager, I said, we have no problem. Once we are able to identify what that demand is actually gonna mean for the office, if we decide at that point to visit the clerk's uh, compensation.
Absolutely.
We'll just adjust the budget at that time, so I was, at, mentioned that to Lisa yesterday, that we can, I, I think there's unanimous support that we wanna make sure she's being com, fairly compensated. Maybe she is, maybe she's not, there's reason to think maybe not, but without really knowing, um.
I, I wouldn't mind diving into the subject, if you don't mind me jumping in. Uh, I've asked her before to log hours, so I can get an idea of how many hours she's putting in, I never get an answer to that. I'd like to have an answer to that, I'd like to know what, you know, cause I mean, for instance, Clerk Lux in the county, her, her base salary is around forty-eight or something like that, which is, you know, a little over double of what Lisa makes, but she's working there every day, all day, every day.
Yes, full time.
So that's different stor, a little bit different story, and I know the elections are big, and there are a lot of, a lot of time, I don't know how much time it is.
She did mention, uh, meeting yesterday that she had started lo, logging, she had started logging some hours, I don't know.
That's excellent.
Yeah, I don't remember, I.
She said seventy hours for s, one pass, but I don't know what it was, but, so she is, she did do some of that, and maybe she'll have that information for us, so.
Right, but I'd like to see that for at least a, a year, you know? I mean, I'm not opposed to increasing her salary just out of, out of hat, you know, hand, but the ba, bottom line is, is that we should have facts that we're dealing with too, or the manager should give us a report or something, I don't even know.
That's why I was recommending, I, I, I pledge I wanna look at this and make sure it's fair. Um, but it's something we can do once we better understand Prop two, and as Trustee Hauk mentioned, we have a light election season this next year. Um, but we wanna make sure that positions, at least I, I have the pledge that I wanna make that compensated fairly.
Sometimes, the, some of the clerks said that, you know, their clerk resigned, and they just got the job, and they don't know what they're doing. And then they have to pay, whatever it is the old clerk wants to get paid per hour, to know what they're doing, to figure it out. So, that's, it could be a real whopper.
I appreciate your approach to that, so thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's important to me too, I'm not trying to, uh, blow smoke at all.
We brought it up, actually, in our meeting.
Our management meeting yesterday, we had this discussion.
And we made it very clear to Lisa that we would like to see that looked into, so.
Or the clerk's position.
Yeah.
And it, it.
Yes, yeah, I'm good.
Clerk, her position, and I, um, I hope Lisa watches this and, and she's okay with what I say, cause I'm gonna have to paraphrase it. But essentially, she, she doesn't really know what Prop two means yet either. Um, it's, it's just not known what that effect's gonna be yet. And we have nine, was it nine days of early voting or in something, I mean, it's, it's gonna change things.
That's what they talked about at the council of governments. I just had a couple other comments. Um, I know ARPA has been mentioned a lot, I can't remember, maybe six, at least six weeks ago, we had brought it up, where everybody went around, I'd like to see this, I'd like to see that, and we were gonna get a, we had talked about maybe getting a list together and email to us, and if there were eight things on it, each one of us could go through and say, okay, item number one, new lunch pails for all the employees. So, you know, okay, that's, that's important to me, so that's number one. Number two, you know, um, new lights for in here. But I'd like to see, I, I, I think it's too late for that now, to decide what we're gonna do with that for budget for next year, but I just didn't, you know, going back to the five hundred thousand dollars for pump station one, I just I know I've said I don't see how our system is self-sufficient, and if we have a five hundred thousand dollar repair, we should be able to afford to make that five hundred thousand dollar repair without like I said before, robbing from Peter to pay Paul. Um, trustee Bills brought up, uh, we talked about in, in the industrial land, I see where the EDA, the East D, East DDA has money in their budget to improve some roads. I know Rodney, you and I talked three or four years ago, when you first got here, I showed, you know, you and I talked about land that is inaccessible. I mean, it's not inaccessible, but you have to go all the way around Airport Road to get to it. Um, if we could expand Corporate Drive to go back, I mean, I would think that that would help, and maybe you could get some of those landowners to go along with it, and use some ARPA funds and extend that road, and make it where we could sell industrial property and increase tax base. I mean, everybody knows I wanna park on the south side, and it's no secret about it, and a lot of people want that. I think ARPA is a good way to get it, but I'm rambling out here, but I also suggested tomorrow. We've got a couple of pieces of property that if we did wanna go out that, you know, put a new park in. Maybe there's a couple of pieces of property we could sell, and new buildings could be put up on it. Highway access would be good on those pieces of property. Um, those are just suggestions that I have for the future, I mean, I only got one meeting left, and I'd just like to see things go in. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak to ARPA for a minute?
Absolutely, please.
So just to get everybody on the same page, and I, that they're still, maybe not for you, cause you've been elected to a different session, but we received a million four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of ARPA funds. And two days, the board has appropriated one hundred and through BA two, you appropriated one hundred and seventy-two thousand of that. Partly for Broomfield Road, partly for the fitness equipment. And then in twenty twenty-three, because of your approval of the fitness equipment, there is also committed forty-eight thousand dollars of ARPA funds. So there is one million two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of the million four of ARPA funds that have not been committed yet. There is a recommendation on the, as part of the budget, simply a recommendation, to use some of that for water and sewer. It's just a recommendation, it's up to you guys, get all worked up, I don't care, it's not my job to care what's used up. We made the recommendation simply because it's a way to cause if you don't use the five hundred from ARPA, you're gonna pay for it with rates, whether you borrow the money, cash finances, or whatever. It's gonna be paid through rates, and so, that's simply why it was recommended that way. That budget hasn't been approved, so the fact of the matter is, there's a million two hundred and sixteen, sixteen thousand dollars of ARPA money that's not been appropriated. And so, I think that there will be continued discussions on that, you have till when does the money need to be spent?
Twenty-four.
I think the end of twenty-four.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-six.
At the end of twenty-four, it has to be decided.
Yep.
And then.
Oh, that's what I was.
Has to be committed at the end of twenty-four and spent by twenty-five.
Twenty-six.
Is that a correct statement?
I, I would have to look it up.
It is.
Twenty, twenty-six.
It is twenty twenty-six, for, it was twenty-six, thank you. So, we got all time, kinda time for ARPA.
Well, thank you.
So.
I just wanted to pick ARPA out there.
If, if I may chime in and just give you my thoughts on this, I was not here, um, the meeting that we discussed, the last meeting, we as a board discussed ARPA by itself. Um, and so, when the recommended budget came, I asked our manager. I asked our manager about those specific recommendations. As a trustee. Uh, I'm probably most closest to the general fund, because I, I don't wanna call it play money, cuz that's not what it is, right? It, it, but that's where we have more latitude. The enterprise funds have a dedicated use, and we have great capital plans, and. I mean, right, and, and I, I don't fear for, at this point, our water and sewer not being able to pay for themselves, but I. As the manager just said, if, if we decide to put some ARPA money in there, it's gonna help roughly seventy percent of. Our tax, uh, residents, okay, and I, I struggle with that personally a little bit. Um, but I'm supportive of it too. A- and so I began to wonder, is it the right amount? Um, a- and the only reason I, I struggle with it, um. I think is I, I always just kinda pictured it, rightly or wrongly, as part of the putting in the general fund. Because we have more latitude there with the things that we can do for our community. But I can also make the argument, and not that I'm against the park idea, but I'm gonna pick on that just for a minute, that. If we did a park, whether, as Clerk Cody suggested, um, maybe just pay for the plans to that, right? That's only gonna service a very small segment of our population. Not that I love parks, but not everybody uses parks. If we do a particular road, it's only gonna really service the people that typically drive that road. Anything we do doesn't always serve a hundred percent of our population, period. And so I, I didn't, I've taken that off the plate as part of my concern, and servicing seventy percent by lowering long-term costs of the water and sewer. I'm okay with really whatever this board decides at this point with, with that. I do like the idea that, um, of having latitude. So I'm really okay with listening to you all on this. But I would like to hear from you.
With the meeting you weren't at, and we, we talked about it, and I was in. Trustee Thering and Trustee Hauk, and I, we, we've all talked about this park for such a long time. I don't know, probably a, a year, year and a half.
Yep.
But there were some things brought to light too, when we, after, you know, we discussed that, and we talked to the manager about the upkeep, which would just. Yeah, I mean, why wouldn't, why, why, why didn't I think of that, you know, um. Um, so there was some concerns with that too. I mean, we go, we, we spend our. Nine hundred million dollars, whatever it is, on five hundred thousand on this park, whatever it is. Um, what's the long-term cost for us, and maintenance cost? Um, gonna be on the, on this, uh, uh, on that, uh, on that end of town. I have no con- I, I have no problems if thirty percent of the constituents use it and the other seventy don't. I, that's, that's, it is what it is. I, I have no concerns with that. Um, but it's the, the, the costs that we're gonna add on to, when I'm gone, our kids are paying, you know, for this park. Um, so that, that was just one of the concerns I have. Not that I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying I'm not against this park. I'm, I'm, I'm all for parks. I'm a bike rider, mountain bike rider. I love the trail down there. I park at the, the apartments and use that. I'd love, I'd love to have a park down there personally. Um, but, but personally, isn't my job today. Uh, today's the, to, to oversee, uh, not just the tree, the whole forest, and that's my concern is the, the, the maintenance of it. And I'd just like to talk more about that as we get into this, um, um, so I know where we are if we're gonna decide on something like that. You know, anything that's gonna add cost on that back end is gonna be a major concern for me.
And I think I didn't articulate it, but I meant to, which is the same thing. Whatever we decide on. Um, it's those long-term costs, that, that, the, the ongoing liabilities, we need to make sure that we've planned for. We do have a parks plan that's being worked on this next year. Um, there's been a lot of discussion. Hopefully, that's something that the Planning Commission looks at. And may, maybe ultimately, there's a recommendation that comes out of the Planning Commission. Um, I know Trustee Thering's at least brought the idea to, to the Planning Commission, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, uh, maybe that's, we'll, we'll learn a lot more with the plan as far as.
Well, it's, it's got a trailhead right there, and nobody says it has to be big today, but it could be the start or something today.
Absolutely.
That's the way I feel about it. A trailhead wouldn't have much maintenance at all. You pave it, you're, you're pretty much done. You just have to mow it.
Maybe, maybe that's all would end up being to start out, and maybe in a year, two or three or four, whatever.
You are here, Maps.
So, let, let me ask this question of the board then. Um, there was a desire to talk about this.
I, I think that's.
As we, as we have a budget proposal in front of us, and we have to approve a budget prior to the end of the year. Do you feel like you have a direction as a body, uh, with this issue?
Yeah, I think we all want that park, and I think we should earmark funds for it.
But I think, I think we all, I won't, I wouldn't say that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I would say we all wanna have the discussion.
Oh, okay.
And, and, and maybe not necessar- necessarily, I mean, I know how you feel, and I, you're not wrong.
Discussion right now, though?
Well, we are, but we gotta get through the budget, so I think collectively, when we come up to make a motion on the fifteen. Maybe that is something that we would request to have removed. From the budget, to leave it alone till we have our discussion, and we might turn around and put it right back where it came from.
Yep.
I mean, in the ARPA discussion, that's one thing I asked of Mark, I need to hear something different, and he absolutely gave me the different that I needed to hear. But now I wanna put them both together and see where that takes us. So that's maybe part of the motion that we'll write down on the sheet of paper. If we all collectively feel the same way.
What I'm trying to ask too is, i- if it's not a constructive, uh, discussion to move forward on this point, right now, will you move on and. Do something with this next month then? Or not do something with this next month?
Yep.
Okay. What else was on your list, please?
I got, I don't think I have anything else.
Those are the two big items that we just, okay.
You know, and the grant, I mean, I, I, we're not here to talk about that tonight, so.
No, but I'm glad you lifted that up, because, yeah, I, I appreciate you carving me in on, on it, and hopefully we have the opportunity to get something from it. So what else does this board need tonight?
I will make one more comment, it's just for the future. I don't know if anybody else, if any of you guys are gonna run again in the future. One thing that we need to start thinking about is. Wages and benefits are really gonna start affecting things too. I mean, right now, your top nine positions for this year. Are costing, or for next year are gonna cost one million one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's forty-four percent of your pay and benefits. So, I mean, I've been on school boards where we've looked at budgets, and you said, okay, you know, a couple of years from now. You know, maybe even next year, now you're gonna have eleven positions that are gonna be making salary and benefits over a hundred thousand dollars. And I'm not against any of it. I mean, I think you should pay people what they're worth. I mean, I know I do. Um, but one thing that you might wanna think about in the future is buyouts. You know, you, I know that's more towards Mark to do it, but. You look at an employee and you think to yourself, okay, now, we buy this guy out for a few thousand dollars. You know, we can hire someone out for less. I don't know if that could work with the union or what, but. I'm just making a suggestion there, because. I talked to Norm Worley, and Norm and I had a good discussion about some of this stuff. So anyways, I just wanted to make that suggestion for the future, but.
That's interesting. I, it's an interesting point, and, um, I, I have not, the, I can't even go there personally. I, that's just stuff that really would have to be dealt with by the manager.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm just, yeah.
You know, I mean, he could bring it to us for approval, but I don't. You know, I.
I, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't, I can't even touch that.
It's, it's in our wheelhouse. I don't know.
Might be the weeds, I'm not sure.
Right. All right, I'm done, whatever.
Okay, so, if everybody's okay, we'll move off the budget.
Like, I have one.
Sure, absolutely. I wanna make sure we do the time now.
Um. The cost of service study shows an increase of like five point one percent for the sewer and four point nine for the water. If, if we do make changes to the ARPA, I mean, are we, are we talking like it's gonna potentially change that to ten percent?
There is a projected change for that. You would either have to borrow more in twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, or you would have to increase rates, yes.
Can we get a copy of that, um, B study, or do we have it? I, I don't seem to have it anywhere.
Yep.
Okay.
It's on our website, and we can.
Oh, it is.
I'll just go to the website then.
Appreciate it. I don't need to have it emailed.
Okay. I mean.
It's easy enough. I have them right on my hard drive. I can.
Oh, sweet. Thank you very much.
Thanks. That was it. Thanks, sir.
Okay. That brings us to item, the new C, right, which was B? Thank you. Um, new business item, C, uh, policy governance two point eight, emergency township manager succession, succession. Typically, I want the manager to introduce this. Did you all read it?
Yeah, we've gone over this ever, you know.
Yeah, we're quite familiar with this.
I like how it is.
We like the way it is. I do, anyway, I can speak for myself. I think we're, uh, I think we're prepared as a township.
What we'll do is we'll move on, oh, oh, okay. I was gonna say, we'll move on, and we'll ask the manager if he had anything he wanted to say. Um, new business item, uh, policy governance three point eight. We had brief comments on it, but I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add, cuz this is prepared from your office.
You mean, two, two point eight?
Did I misspeak? I'm sorry. Yes, I did.
We were just saying how we thought we were prepared as a township.
We've gone through this in the past.
Through two point eight?
Yes, sir.
And there is one change this year that I do wanna point out, is in terms of a recommendation. So, two point eight. Page sixty-one in your agenda packet.
And the change is on sixty-two, I think.
Pardon me?
The change is on sixty-two, I think.
Yes.
Probably C, right?
So there, there are two things. One, review the compliance with the policy. And then that also creates an opportunity for me to review the policy. And I have a recommended change addition to the policy, which is to add. The Community and Economic Development Director to, so that there's three positions in lines of succession versus the current two.
In that order? In that order?
The policy says that. Appoint an interim man- your policy says to appoint an interim manager according to the following line of succession. If you would like to have a little more flexibility, you don't need to have that piece in there about using A, B, and C.
Oh, yeah.
Is, is your thought then that, um, assuming this is approved in, in policy governance, that. Uh, you would rotate in your absence all three, so they'd all have the opportunity to play that role?
Yes, because part of the policy is these folks have to be prepared and, you know, acclimated, and. So they can assume that role, and one of the ways to do that is when I'm gone, to. Appoint various people, different people, when I'm gone.
I think that's worked well.
They run a faster meeting than you do.
And they should, because there should be less controversy when I'm not here.
Well, I didn't mean anything by that.
Using your outside voice again, Bill.
One, one meeting left, and he's gonna disturb it as much as he can, huh?
Are you good?
Yes.
All right, so, as a policy, this board, what I'm hearing, doesn't have issues, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Would you like us to, uh, if we agree with it, make a motion so that this can be changed?
Please.
I'd move to add the addition of, uh, the third successor. To the Township Manager position under pre-procedures for succession.
So the policy statement, read as follows.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second, uh, support by Bills, um, I'm sorry, motion by Bills. Nine o'clock, I'm getting tired already. Uh, motion by Bills, support by Brown. I already hear the motion. Is to accept the changes that are in front of us regarding two point eight.
Yes.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, so all in favor, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stool Dryer.
Thank you.
That brings us to item eleven. Having trouble following this now. The next item on the agenda, which is policy governance three point eight. Which is regarding, uh, Board Committee's structure? Nope, I'm sorry, Board Committee principles. And really, two point eight, or three point eight and three point nine are kinda lumped together here. You mind taking them together?
Yep, no, that's fine.
Um, which also has committee structure then.
Right.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to this? Before.
Other than just to point out, I've combined also three point eight, three point nine. It seems to me they're so connected that. There's one memo that addresses both of them.
Okay.
And I will also point out that. There are currently no committees.
What about the sidewalk?
That's a Planning Commission committee.
Oh, it's a Planning Commission? Sorry.
There's no Board Committee.
No Board Committees, correct.
We, we used to have a Sustainability Committee that was a standing committee.
I think we should have committees.
So, I'll give you an opportunity to speak to that in a minute. Uh, so do you believe at least we're in compliance with the policy as stated?
Yes.
Yes.
Item three on our questions, uh, how do you think we can improve the process to be full compliance? Well, let me jump to the end then. Are there, are there changes that you would like to see that would allow us to, as a board. Live up better to our policy and/or make the policy better?
Uh, I think we should use committees to, um, educate the board and also further our goals. In particular, I have a feeling that we really could use some, uh, clarification on policy governance. In general, especially the principles. And we might need a Policy Governance Committee.
I was just gonna ask you for an example of. What you think's missing that a committee could offer? And then you just, you just gave an example. Before I get to ask it.
Thank you.
Um, I, I did have a question as I went through it. Um, I thought of the sidewalk committee. And maybe I interpreted this wrong, and I'm looking for it now. Uh, basically, I'm gonna have to paraphrase, cuz I'm not seeing it. Uh, but basically, no committees, um, will exist except for at the desire of the board. And I thought, well, we have that already with the sidewalk committee. Right? Cuz that's sanctioned a hundred percent by the Planning Commission.
Your, your sidewalk committee is a result of your sidewalk ordinance. That, that's where the sidewalk committee comes from.
And, and I wasn't here when that was stood up, but I think it was board-directed, right? And that was the question I really had, is the board kinda directed it, and the Planning Commission took ownership for appointments?
I'm not sure when the sidewalk ordinance was adopted or amended. But it's in your ordinance, it's in the sidewalk ordinance that creates the sidewalk committee.
Okay, I misunderstood.
And that is different than a board-created committee to address things like Trustee Bills just talked about.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? I'd like to have a conversation with you, though.
Thank you.
Um, without objection, then we'll move on. And we've finished new business, haven't we?
Uh, E, oh, wait, that's right, sorry, we took those two.
I'm only a little confused, cuz we ordered, re- reordered things. I'm only a little confused, 'cause we ordered, reordered things tonight. That brings us to extended public comment, extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the matter. Tara, do we have anybody on line by chance?
I don't.
You don't, okay, so we'll recognize any that are in, in public here, in attendance, and we will open up extended public comment at nine oh six PM, welcome.
You're welcome, you guys had an audience tonight. That feel good?
Yeah.
People actually watch this, believe it or not. So, first things first is, I missed dinner, and I missed Oak Island tonight to be here. So, missing Oak Island for me is a biggie, so they probably didn't find the treasure anyway tonight, but I did wanna mention that I really appreciate the board and, and, and funding Broomfield Road. That's gonna be such a huge improvement, we have so many people that I see jogging and biking on that road. The added safety aspect of having the paved shoulders is gonna be huge. And I'm looking forward to actually adding bike racks, I mean, I, I never wanted people to bike on that road before, 'cause they took their life in their own hands, but now there's actually a reason. So, in that same vein, obviously, the intersection at some point in time is gonna need to have a signal. It's pretty confusing, you got ten legs of traffic coming into that four-way area, and there's gonna be confusion, so bound to be, there's gonna be accidents, hopefully, there're gonna be fender benders, but that's something hopefully you guys will continue to address. Number two, speed limit on that road. Lincoln is forty-five miles an hour. Broomfield is like eighty, 'cause I'm, I live on that road. Particularly the gravel trucks in the summertime. And I would, I know this night in, in this board's purview, but the discussion, or at least this board can discuss, that maybe the road commission look into the idea of taking that area and, and reducing the speed to forty-five, which I think is plenty fast for that short stretch of road. ARPA funding, discussion tonight, I'm hoping that the public will have an opportunity on this. You know, I, I just don't like the idea of people sitting around with a wish list and making decisions on, on money that's supposed to benefit the community. So I think, you know, some type of a public involvement next year, like a, much like we did with the master plan, where we had open houses, you know, and these are some ideas, and there might be some great ideas that come up, but I think it's, it's important for the public to be involved. Number three, this is gonna be directed towards economic and development coordinator. In the last planning commission meeting, there's a direct discussion about changing the zoning on my property from B four on the frontage to B five. I got heads up from a couple of planning commissioners that I might wanna dial in that night, and I did. In the future, I know that it's not required, but boy, I sure would love, if, if there's gonna be a discussion changing commercial property, that, you know, the landowner should be involved in the discussion. Okay, not just planning commission people, or economic development people, but I own that property. So that twenty-eight acres, you know, if you're gonna change the zoning on it, I'd sure like to be involved in the conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Smith, twenty-two eighty-four Sandstone Drive, I wasn't gonna come and speak, but when you're talking about the ARPA funds, it's, it's a huge decision you have. And I know Mr. Stooldryer put out a ten-year budget future report a few years ago, and it kinda outlined how in the future you're gonna be dipping into your general fund savings. So, and I hope when you come up that you're not looking at a lot of long-term exposure on your spending. That you're gonna somehow gonna be able to use it for capital projects that will lessen your long-term exposure, so I know that's gonna go into, yes, you want parks, you want everything like that, but I hope that there would be a broadened consensus on that. When you're talking five hundred thousand dollars for the lift station, I know a couple of meetings ago, you had people coming and talking about the high rates for tap fees and everything else that goes with it. Well, guess what, if you're in commercial business, if you don't put five hundred thousand dollars in that lift station, you're gonna have to borrow, and it's gonna raise everybody's rates, and then you're gonna have to see people coming back and complaining about the rates again. So it kinda all comes in to the proper use of it, you don't wanna get into a system of water and sewer like Benton Harbor, like Flint and all these other ones, where now they're just like, what do we do? Or Jackson, Mississippi, where there are billions of dollars, not saying you're ever gonna get to that point. That's something that I would, you know, keep in light, keep in mind, that you're gonna have long-term infrastructure costs, people kinda tend to forget about that, 'cause it's not popular, it's not a fun thing to talk about. But that would be an area, and also an area of getting your long-term cost shaved now, so that's the only thing I wanna point out to you tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Still no one online?
Nope.
Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at nine twelve PM. That brings us to item thirteen on our agenda, managers' comments, Mr. Stooldryer, Stooldryer, excuse me, you have the floor.
Thank you, I have no comments tonight.
What? Oh, my. With that, final board member comment, we started with you at the beginning, didn't we, so we'll start with trustee Brown.
Oh, I've just been waiting for this, guess what's parked outside, or was parked outside. I'm excited to say our new pump truck is here, finally, I can stop talking about it, but I won't. I hope the community gets out to see it, and I hope, I said, I hope we never have to use it in an emergency, but when we do, I'm gonna be waiting for that email, manager, so I can go out and actually see that, that truck to work. With that being said, I think this is a, a, a good day for Union Township, this is a great tool in our toolbox, just being able to speak to, I'm sorry.
Josh.
Josh, the excitement in his eyes and in his handshake when we walked up there was just outstanding, and that's, that's what it's all about. It's about, it's about the people that work for this organization, that we take care of them out there in the field, and this, this piece of equipment is, for me, as a trustee, to know these guys are out there at twelve-thirty at night, snowing and blowing, is a huge piece of safety. And that's, 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 it, it just makes me feel really good, I'm very happy about seeing, being able to pull up and see that, exciting. Great conversation tonight, outstanding conversation tonight, I appreciate every one of you, thank you, that's all I have.
Trustee Bills?
Thank you, sir, I have a couple of things, number one, great discussion on the budget tonight, I hope we can make some kind of compromise on the fees for, for the water, anyway. The second thing I'd like to say is something I've been thinking about since I went to the boot camp back in whatever, September, or whatever it was. Policy, principle one of policy governance says that we need to hear from the ownership on an annual basis, and I've been here for two years, and I've talked about it, and I've requested surveys, and I've requested a lot, we've got nothing, so what I would suggest is that, and this is a suggestion that we could either do or not do, but one thing that was suggested at the meeting was to have every board member, well, have, have us decide on a list of questions, then have every board member go out and ask five people they don't know these same questions within the township, to find out what these people want from us, and what we can do for them. We have been flying blind for two years, in my opinion, we've got nothing. The last survey is useless, 'cause it was done before COVID, and that, COVID changed everything, and everybody's point of view. So in my opinion, we are not doing what we need to be doing for principle one. So I appreciate what Mr. Gunning said about the open houses, because I suggested, and so did trustee Houck and maybe a few others, I don't recall, that we get some kind of a neighborhood party, and I was told, we were shot down, saying, oh, we can't spend, we can't have a meeting like that, or blah, 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 I don't know. But the fact is, we don't have a way to hear from our ownership yet, and we need to figure that out, that's one of the things I need to do in a committee format, but, or maybe not, or maybe we just get together or something and do that, or do it at a meeting, but that's all I got.
Thank you. Trustee Therin?
I am good, thank you.
Treasure Rice?
You're looking at me like you expect me to say something.
Not necessarily, although our manager shocked me, but.
I'm good.
Trustee Houck?
Tonight was my prom. You know, you go to prom for graduation, next meeting's my graduation, so, whatever. I just want, I just, you know, hope that you guys get together and think about the future, who you're gonna have replace me, I'd like to have a little input on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't have anything, but I did wanna respond to Mr. Gunning. I do agree on the speeds, and, and I may be incorrect in my knowledge base, but I'm gonna at least say what I think I know. What I understand on Lincoln is it's actually fifty-five from Broomfield to Remus, and then it turns forty-five? Because years ago, we had an issue with a lot of the canoeers and tubers that would get on at the, the bridge there, and we asked the Michigan State Police to do a study to, to lower that. And the result of that was, well, we still think it's rural, we're not seeing enough traffic, we're leaving at fifty-five, and that was, the end result of that was the township deciding to put up those signs every hundred feet. But I, I've always had those same concerns, and I agree with Broomfield on your comments on that as well, and I'm lifting those up because I live there and I see it too. On, on the signal, you might wanna talk to the road commission. I, I don't think that's something that, we, we have a say there, but as I understand it, because that project had to be scaled back because of lost funds, et cetera, et cetera, right, and rising costs. And as a result of that, I don't think they allowed, they made that corner to be allowable to have a signal there. But I agree that having, that essentially three lanes coming in, it's gonna get confusing, and you're right, there's gonna be fender benders there, I think, we'll see. I've already seen confusion at that corner when I'm going through it, so I, I echo your concerns is my point on that. And that's all I have, with that, I'd be happy to.
Make most of it a jerk.
Motion by Houcks, port by Rice, all in favor, say aye.
Actually Bills, correction, Bills.
Oh, was?
Might be the last one I get to.
She beat me to it. Aye, by the way.
What's that?
Aye, by the way.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.